Call to order, the joint meeting of the Katati City Council and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. And with that, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Skoman?
Here.
Councilmember Deloso?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman, I'll show his absent, and Councilmember Moore.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please be outside.
We have an opportunity at item number 15 for non-action items. I've given you an exception the last couple of times, but on item 15, we're more than happy to hear from you. Thank you.
While we should, I guess, by the way, the Brown Act, it won't be counted on the record.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great work of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will move on to the minutes. I'd move to approve.
Second.
All on.
I had a correction, I believe, on the minute.
Okay.
On the vote regarding Redwood Empire disposal, I did not vote on that, and I believe the minutes reflect that it was a 5-0. So, the correction on that one.
All right, with that correction, I would move to approve.
I'll still second.
Okay, with that correction, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I have.
And we have one absent. Okay, thank you. Announcements, the city of Katati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Katati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Katati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Walnut Park Katati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit www.sonoma library.org. The Katati Historical Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00, and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving the City of Katati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle, N-I-X-L-E dot com. The city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at katatiscity.org. The next Coffee with a Cop is this Friday, February 17th, at 7:00 a.m. Join the Katati Police Officers for a cup of coffee and casual conversation at Pete's Coffee in Katati. And with that, approval of the final agenda, are there any changes?
No changes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the City Council Policy 2016-1, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, any... George, come forward.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. That was a mouthful there, Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
What a wonderful welcome that you gave to the audience tonight, so I want to thank you for that. Very charming, thank you.
Well, Happy Valentine's Day.
For the benefit of the public, my name is George Berich. I'm a former city councilman here in Katati, and I want to speak first to our last city council meeting some three weeks ago. About halfway through the city council meeting, the good mayor decided to take a recess. And I was sitting here in my chair minding my own business, and Councilmember Deloso took the opportunity to walk down next to me there and started to berate me about the fact that he didn't like the facts that I presented to the city council the way that he wanted to hear them. And he asked me that, "George, why don't you tell all the facts?" And I said, "Well, Mr. Deloso, you know, if you gave me more time, I might be inspired to, but since I'm only limited to three minutes, I'm telling the facts the way I see them, and you can either tell the facts the way that you'd like to see them, or what you guys normally do is just tell a lot of lies and enter those lies into the record. That's your choice." But my point is, is that it's totally inappropriate and unethical to be berating citizens who are minding their business at the break to come down and try to intimidate and bully and try to force your facts on the public when that is just totally irresponsible. You council members have the ability and the right and the responsibility that if you hear facts that you don't like or you want to enter facts into the record, that that's your prerogative to do that on your own time. It is also your right to ask members of the public, if you wish, to step up to the podium and clarify people's statements and ask questions and so forth. The council never does this, even though I've advised that that's within your right to do that. You will not do that. It's easier for you to berate citizens, mock citizens once they sit down, once they're done, and enter your lies into the record and so forth. It's not right. The council talks about transparency. If you want to be transparent, put your objections on the record. Tell the facts the way you want to tell them. Spin the facts the way normal bought-and-sold politicians spin the facts. Spin them. Do it on television. Do it in front of the audience. Don't come down face-to-face and bully citizens. That's the grounds for another civil rights lawsuit, so be very careful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this or the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I will close citizens' business, and we will move on, direction on future agenda items. Yes?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is necessarily a direction on future agenda, but if we could continue to get, maybe it's monthly or every other month, updates on the safe parking program. You know, I've gone through there just once in the evening hours and saw, I think the night I went through was probably four vehicles, maybe there's three, I can't remember right now. But it'd just be nice to get some updates. I don't think we need an agenda item on this at this point in time unless we want to revisit it and change the policy that's in place, but for now, if we could just get that occasional update, it'd be great. Thanks.
And I just wanted to see, somebody had contacted me about the feasibility of getting a teen center started now that we've got the Recreation Department in place, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there as something to consider as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Along those same lines, we might want to consider contacting the municipal attended schools regarding the honorary mayor program now that they've had that hiatus.
Okay. Staff, you have what you need? All righty. Then we will move on to the consent calendar.
There was no public comment previously?
Did anyone want to speak on that? I asked, but I'll ask again. No? Okay.
Well, then I'll move to approve items A and B on the consent calendar.
At second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let that be four with one absent. Then we will move on to public hearings, which there are none, so we will move on to the regular agenda. And the first is the amended Sonoma County Waste Management Agency Joint Powers Agreement. Yes! Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, I'll be doing the staff report. We also do have a representative from Sonoma County Waste Management Authority here is also here to answer any questions that you might have. So, just a quick recap of, was largely already in the staff report, but the Sonoma County Waste Management Authority, which is called the Waste Agency, was formed in 1992, and it was formed largely to address the diversion requirements that were promulgated by the state. And the core programs of the Waste Agency are wood waste and yard debris, organic material processing, household hazardous waste collection and disposal, solid waste education and outreach, and the state-required solid waste planning and reporting functions. And the original, when the Waste Agency was formed, it was formed as what's called the Joint Powers Authority, and the cities that were all part of that Joint Powers Authority had originally, I guess, well, not a guess, I know that they had set the term for 25 years, and that 25-year term for the JPA had expired a year ago, or I guess maybe it was this year. And it had subsequently been extended by one year, but they were trying to work out with all the changes in the solid waste system in the county, how those changes were going to be managed and reflected in the new agreement, and different cities' priorities on how to manage the various types of waste streams. So, as Patrick can attest to, that was, and the mayor can attest to, it was a very fun discussion.
Love.
That went on for over a year, and the current term, as is stated here, expires February 11th, 2018. That was with a one-year extension. And if it's not extended or replaced, then the services that the Waste Agency currently provides then default back to the members, so the cities individually have to do that. The amended and restated agreement retains the existing, so that's what's attached to this item, is it retains the existing core programs, and the core programs are identified as the organics processing as they currently exist, which is primarily just trucking it out of the county for processing, household hazardous waste, education and outreach, and household hazardous waste, separate items, education and outreach, and then planning and reporting. So, those are, in this new agreement, those are considered the core programs because those are the programs that the various parties to the JPA coalesced around and had a mutual interest in universally, so those were considered core programs. And then when it got into expanded, you know, green waste composting programs, and then some additional things, which is in the staff report, this is packet page 57, that would be considered optional programs, either defined explicitly in the JPA or optional programs that the JPA members want to embark on that are undefined but maybe are required in the future at some point, then those are optional programs, so members can opt into it or not, and there's a process for that now. And those are the more, I guess you'd call them controversial programs, because some cities would want them, some cities may not, and by allowing that flexibility, it seemed to bridge the gap in the disagreements around the future of the JPA. Some main provisions I'll just point out is, there is no term on the new JPA, but it does require periodic, which is defined as 10-year check-ins, to look at how things are running and get back to it. The 25-year term, the defined term, was a problem in the first iteration because of the, just the structure of the JPA. It was, you know, it's kind of like a, there was no outlet for disagreement, so there was, there was no easy way to amend it, and it was just kind of running out of time, and so that was a problem. So, this, the new one doesn't have any term, any defined term on it, but it does have check-ins. And then there's a unanimous vote for two things. One is acquisition of property greater than $250,000. The other thing that requires unanimous votes, unanimous vote is if you're amending the JPA. So, what makes that a little bit more manageable, I guess, is that the core programs are pretty universally desired by all the members of the JPA, so it's unlikely that there's going to be any sort of amendment that's going to be controversial because the other things are discretionary, and people can opt in or out of them. So, at least my hope, you know, my hope from my perspective is that the unanimous vote for the JPA won't be as big of an obstacle as it was with the prior JPA structure because of the flexibility that's built into it this round. And then there are a couple supermajority votes, and that's for the annual budget or budget amendments, expenditures over $250,000, and issuing of debt over the same amount. And then finally, there is a summary of the changes that's also attached, and the alternative is to let the JPA expire, which I think everyone, everyone at the table that was discussing this amendment feels that that's universally a bad idea because trying to manage, especially for a city of Katati's size, trying to manage some of those education outreach, reporting, those household hazardous waste functions, there's no way that we could ever do it, A is cost-effectively, and B, even find the money to do it. You know, it's not clear where that money would come from. So, it's certainly for a city our size, it's a good program, and they do a good job. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and like I said, Patrick is also here to answer questions if you have some.
Questions? I do have one question. Could you say that there's two things on unanimous vote, but the only, there's really only one thing that's unanimous vote, and that's the interest in real property. What is subtle about the amendment to the agreement is that amendment to the agreement has to go back to the jurisdictions and get approval, so...
Right, yeah.
That's not...
Excellent point. It's not strictly unanimous vote of the board members, it's unanimous vote of the jurisdictions that are, unanimous approval of the jurisdictions that are...
Yeah, which is a subtle difference. It's not really a unanimous vote, it's approval from the jurisdictions. And there actually is four things that require approval from the jurisdictions, additional, implementation of additional program in a member's jurisdiction, approval of an alternate organics material program, dissolution of the agency, and an amendment to the agreement. So, those are kind of where people felt that we had to actually go back and get approval from the jurisdictions, and that seemed to appease most folks, so... All right, I'll open this up to the public. Lori? Oh, let Lori, and then we'll let Patrick. Your hand was up first, Lori. He just couldn't see behind him.
I'm not feeling good tonight, so excuse the dress. I wanted to give some financial facts about the garbage company and the city's finances. They receive $150,000 a year through the garbage contract. That goes into, I think it's capital outlay, and for the last four years, that $150,000 has gone back out to, so it's $600,000, has gone back out to the, I think it's the grants fund, I'm not exactly sure, you'll have to ask Norm, but it goes to the downtown improvement project. So, the damage for, I guess it's an impact fee for the damage for the garbage trucks to the street. They, throughout the city, they pay this fee. Well, you've put all the money, you've taken all the money and put it downtown. It's not citywide. I sent you an Excel sheet that sent, that had this information, and as most things, everything goes. The street budget for street maintenance of Katati for the whole year, that ending this June, is $2,500 for the whole city. I mean, this says a lot about how finances happen in this city. Thank you.
So, Lori, just to clarify for you, this agreement that we're looking at is the JPA Agreement for the Waste Management Agency, this Sonoma County, which is a group of all of the cities, and they handle the reporting and education and composting and things. It doesn't have to do with the garbage in the city. I just...
Yeah, isn't it under, for sale? Isn't there the garbage sale?
No, this is, this has nothing to do with that. This is, is the Waste Management Agency, and the four main things that they do have to do with reporting to the state for all of the cities, the composting and household hazardous waste.
Okay, so this isn't the actual...
Yeah, this is, yeah, something different. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Still, the information's good.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Hello, Mayor Harvey and councilmembers. Thank you for taking this up tonight on Valentine's Day and letting us put this agreement in front of you and hear your comments on it. This represents many, many, many hours of work on both staff, board members, who Mayor Harvey is our representative from Katati on the Board of Directors, and attorneys to get to this point, and we've been talking this for, about this for literally years. So, this has been thoroughly vetted by staff and attorneys, so I think we've worn everybody down at this point getting to this document. But some things I'd just like to point out about this agreement. This agreement saves money because working together, we've had third-party reviewers come in and look at the services that we're providing, and that they found that if each city were to take on a similar, not even the same level of service that this agency is providing now, could cost as much as $1.4 million a year in addition to what's already being paid in our budget. So, the economy scales that we're realizing by working together is saving the ratepayers a significant amount of money when you look at it as a county-wide basis. It provides flexibility, as your city manager pointed out, for the optional programs, there could be ordinances that would be considered on a model basis in the future. Only those that wish to participate are, you know, paying for that, so it gives flexibility to members to be able to, you know, say if they want to participate or not in those programs. It maintains the regional consistency, so one of the things that we do is we publish annually a recycling guide, and we look at the county as a whole. We look at what resources are available out there and what are the best way to put those in front of people, whereas, you know, a single city might just focus on their borders and kind of miss that across the street, maybe there's another option that might be more convenient for people. So, we try to, you know, look at that regional basis and try to provide consistency throughout the entire county on that. There are some financial protections, like for those optional programs that we talked about, if there are ordinances out there, if it's an ordinance that this agency drafts and puts in front of the members for consideration, we have in the past and we will in the future indemnify our members so that they're not picked off one by one by groups that might oppose it, you know, they kind of, we try to give a protection in that regard. And I think that this agreement really streamlines operations. The unanimous vote requirement, while a good thing in some respects to prevent, protects, you know, some interests, it's held up things like budgets. You know, somebody, nobody disagreed on the budget, but because we have a unanimous vote requirement for it, we've had to continue it to the next meeting just because somebody was absent. So, that's not an efficient way to do business, and I think having the eight-tenths supermajority vote will solve that problem and help us just operate efficiently. And, yeah, that's it. We just celebrated our 25th anniversary in existence, so that was just a couple days ago. So, look forward to hearing your comments on this, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else want to speak on this side? Well, we'll see if they have questions. Questions? No?
I do have a few questions.
Well, you may ask it.
Are you done with public comment?
No one else want to speak?
I was going to ask you what your summary was on this, being that you're the representative for Sonoma County Waste Management.
This has been a long and hard thing to put together. I think if you look at kind of pages 83 through 85, kind of what was in the old agreement and the new agreement, you can see that it was a 25-year-old agreement, and there were things that were working and things that weren't working for people. It took staff and the attorneys and the consultants and a lot of negotiating to get to this point. So, I think it's a great agreement. I think that the agency serves us well, in particular because of the size of our city. We really, really benefit from this. And as you all will know, because we've done other JPAs, there are certain compromises that have to be made in order to, you know, get those through, as I see Robin laughing. But we did that, and I think we were able to, you know, one example of that is, we originally had a supermajority of seven out of 10, and we had one city that that wasn't going to do it for them. So, we worked through that, and we said, "Okay, so if we go up to eight out of 10," so, you know, you kind of really, it's a super, supermajority, and that seemed to appease that city. So, it's really been a lot of give and take. So, I fully support this, and I really appreciate all the city attorneys. They really worked very hard at this. They worked well together this last time, and staff at the Waste Management Agency, and our staff, too.
So, have we gained anything in the new JPA other than the ability to have a supermajority versus unanimity on the budgeting?
We can add additional programs, and there's capabilities for us to add them in to non-core programs, and that gives people the opportunity to opt in or out. And before, we had to actually go through and...
You had to pay for them if you didn't take part.
Well, yeah, but you also had to update the JPA agreement to make that happen, and now there's provisions in here to add programs. I mean, who knows what will be happening in 20 or 25 years, so I think that's...
I totally, I mean, I totally see there's a substantially substantial financial advantage to the new JPA versus the old one, just from the standpoint of, you know, when you were a non-participant in a non-core program, too many "nons" in one sentence, I know, you still paid for it. And in the new JPA, if I've got that right, and I've seen nodding, then, you know, that's not the case. So, if you participate, yes, there's a fee, but if you're a non-participant, that wasn't the way it was. I think that's huge, and I think you used the word flexibility, which is what I wrote down. I mean, this has built-in flexibility that I don't think the previous JPA had.
And there's, to add to that, there's even flexibility for people to withdraw from things. They have to finish up that year so that the agency kind of has the funding to finish off that budget year, but give a notice, a 180-day notice, they can go ahead and withdraw from different things.
And the agreements that were reached with all the participants in the drafting of this, the allowing members to opt out of additional non-core programs makes sense in many of those areas. Removing provisions requiring accounting to provide sites for composting and household hazardous waste at the central landfill?
The original agreement, and I, you know, Patrick may know what, how that got there, but in the original agreement, it specifically said that that county will provide free-of-charge a site for those things. Who knows, I wasn't here 25 years ago, why that was put in there, but that, you know, that doesn't make sense, especially now that the county isn't even running that site. So, you can add on that, but...
Yeah, my understanding of it was that the county basically was the biggest player in the room, and they kind of had, the cities kind of had expectations of them to provide a subsidy, and essentially that's what it was, to help these operations get started up and running. So, for the composting program, for many, many years, over 23 years, I think it was, there was a composting operation at the Meacham Road landfill.
Right.
The county provided that site free-of-charge. Its sites closed down now, so that obligated... Its sites closed down now, so that obligation was removed because the agency now has its, its kind of financial wherewithal to provide those sites itself, or at least right now the plan is to find out from the private sector what options are out there to provide a composting site. The household hazardous waste site, there's a license agreement that provides that, the agency the ability to operate there and that runs the, for the term of this agency. So, I mean theoretically, it could be forever. So, rather than baking that, hard coding that into the agreement, it's something that's done through separate agreements so that we don't have to change the whole JPA agreement just if we want to move to a different site, for example, which theoretically, some people could argue that you may have had to do in the previous agreement. So, this one says it could be there or it could be somewhere else. The, the agency could establish multiple household hazardous waste sites or multiple compost facilities as well. So, it, again, it comes back to the comment on flexibility.
Yeah. Well, household hazardous waste is an interesting one because one of the things that we've noticed from all, all of the reports is that located by Central, there's a lot more use. So, Cattati uses it, Petaluma uses it, you know, but the farther you get out in North County, there's a lot less use. So, one of the things that's in here is the possibility of maybe having another site so we could get more use in St. North County, 'cause they're not as likely to drive their, their items down here. Of course, they have all the events and, you know, try and do the outreach that way, but, but you, you get a lot more self-hall use from the, from the folks closer.
Do you not conversely have the ability to at some point say, we're not going to deal with the household hazardous waste?
This agency? That would be, I, that would, from my perspective, that would clearly be, need to be an amendment to this agreement to.
That's a core program.
That, that service, 'cause it is a core program.
Okay. But the composting was not a core program?
The composting is a core program and the way it's written into this agreement is we can either continue the current program, which is trucking it out of the, out of the county to other compost sites, or for the members that are interested in participating as a region or part of a region, they can opt into a program to build a new compost site or into, into an agreement with a private operator to provide a new compost site. So, again, it's, it's, there's the flexibility. Or if the city wanted to go alone and not participate, that's also an option as well. If they just said, you know, we want to truck our compost down to the Redwood landfill or something like that where the compost operation is there, that's something that the, the city could do unilaterally.
Well, and I think when the original JPA was drafted, this, this was all a county-run landfill facility.
Correct, yeah.
Right. And then down the road, the county said, oh, well, we don't really want to run a landfill facility because of certain liabilities. So, now that's all privately run with a for-profit corporation. So, at some point, you could technically have the hazardous household waste program come out of that core program and in theory, be a for-profit enterprise?
The difficulty with household hazardous waste operations is they're really expensive, so it's hard to make a, a good profit off of that. I mean, that's, it's, aside from the composting program, it's the single largest expense in our budget to take care of hazardous waste. So, I mean, there, anything's theoretically possible, but it's, it's difficult to imagine that there would be a for-profit company being able to come in and run it less expensively than this agency.
Anything's possible, but it, you know, it's sort of like what happened with recycling stuff. For a long time, recycling, you know, there was profit in that. Well, now, you, you're seeing that there's not a lot of profit there, so the recycling is kind of getting backlogged, if you will, because nobody's taking those commodities.
And then tipping fees went up because the company still has to make a profit, you know? In an entity that's necessarily run maybe by a county, you don't necessarily have to worry about that particular provision where you may be able to save the consumer money by not necessarily having to incorporate that for-profit margin. And my concern, and I know this is probably something that is going to go beyond this, but the, the watering down of services that are, were initially provided by the county, i.e. Republic running the landfill, on the potential for cha- allowing changes within the JPA that could opt for provisions to come out of the JPA, I think is just kind of a consumer weakening to a certain degree because then you start to put the, the onus on going to organizations that are not public entities and are for-profit corporations. So, I think that there's a concern there. With that in mind, it doesn't require unanimous approval by the council, just a majority approval for each of the council to proceed further. So, i- i- if you don't have any concerns with some of the issues on here, then I'm going to save some time and, and not really get into that. But I do really have a concern because anytime you take those away, they never come back because then it's, it's just too expensive to bring it back in. And I don't, we've lost control of the Central Landfill with the contract with Republic, as we've witnessed.
Well, I will tell you that we'll have report tomorrow at the Waste Management Agency meeting, but we already have put out for requests for information for the composting again and we got 16 replies. So, there is interest in, in doing that. So, I wouldn't necessarily say that it's gone forever. I, I think that it's gone in the way in which we thought it was going to happen. And yes, you're right that, that the county originally had that land and that was one of the things that, that we kind of looked at was that they wanted to charge the Waste Management Agency a very large sum of money to rent that space. And that, that also, you know, kind of played, played it into that. So, yes, that site is very different than what it was.
Twenty-five, thirty years.
Twenty-five, thirty, thirty years ago, you know, and what are you gonna do?
Can I just add something to the discussion? There's nothing that prevents this agency from owning property as well and that could guarantee the availability of that site indefinitely. It just would require a supermajor- uh, a unanimous, excuse me, unanimous vote of all the board members to purchase that site, assuming that it's more than $250,000, which I don't know what kind of site we'd get for less than that, but just wanted to point that out that that's a possibility. If that, if there's a strong desire for the agency to own property to guarantee that and, you know, for the foreseeable future, that can be done through this agreement.
And that's another reason that, that we talked for a really long time about limiting the length of it because it does make it a little bit harder when you keep bumping into these 25-year things. You can look at doing some long-term things if you, if you don't have that hard, that hard date. You, you can amortize things, you can purchase property, you can do lots of things that you couldn't do. I mean, that, it was really part of the problem with the composting to begin with is we, we were having a hard time doing contracts at all because we had this hard 2017 date. Well, nobody would enter into an agreement on something that was going away in a few years. They wouldn't be able to recoup their investment to be able to do that. So, this is a lot better, I think. So.
Thank you.
Are you? Okay?
No, that's all right.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Patrick. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Mayor Harvey.
Sorry.
Councilmember John Delawso.
Oh.
Wonder if I could play tonight? Patrick, don't leave, I have a question for you and then one for staff. Twenty-five-ish or more years ago, there was a State Assembly Bill 939 and AB 939 was talking about waste diversion. So, when I hear of a compost program not in great condition that it was some years ago, whatever the case is, and we're, you know, we're hauling it off out of county, is there, i- i- is there, are there remnants of AB 939 still around? Are we still under some kind of direction? And I don't know what that is and I'd be curious if you've got that information?
Yeah, the AB 939, I think it was 1989, was enacted so that there was a 50% waste reduction mandate for all the cities and the counties throughout California to achieve by 2000. So, that is part of the reporting process that we do on an annual basis to the state agency CalRecycle. If this agency didn't do that reporting, it would default back to the city to perform that. So, yes, diversion is very much an important thing on, on people's minds. The composting program, it's, the location's changed and it's taking longer to get it to that compost facility, but it's still being composted. I just want to make it clear that.
Okay.
We're not, we're not landfilling the green waste. So, you know, unfortunately, it's being trucked a, a further distance to get to where it's being composted, but it is still being diverted. And so, that's, you know, part of, part of our mission, you know, encouraging recycling, encouraging composting, more to take your, your hazardous waste so it can get disposed in a proper manner.
Right. I, I, there's always that, that part that the public doesn't see and that's the end of the process. And, you know, my garbage gets hauled away, goes into a dump, my yard waste gets hauled away, I hope it gets recycled and composted and all that good stuff. So, that's, that's great to hear. Thank you. That's, that was my question for you. And for staff, the comparison chart that's in here, is that just an internal document that was made for this report or is that an official Waste Management Agency-type document?
It was produced by the Waste Agency.
It was produced, but it's not, it's not like part of what we have to sign, 'cause I saw the signature pages were.
Yeah, it's not part of the JPA, it's just the staff report.
Okay, great, 'cause there were just a couple of corrections that need to be made and I'm not going to worry about it. Great, thank you.
And John, just to add to what you were talking about diversion, the other thing that, you know, like you said, a public not being aware, one of the things that happens now is that food waste can, can also be diverted and that's not something that, you know, I think everybody is aware of, but that's why we do the education, so that people do become aware of that.
That's great.
Thanks.
And our existing compost goes out of county.
Correct.
Yes.
So, we don't really get the benefit of that if we wanted to obtain some of that compost.
That's the problem.
Unfortunately.
That's the problem right now. That, that's why we're looking to do something to bring it back.
It's just the domino effect, I'm telling you.
Yeah, well, yep. Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, with that.
With that, I move to adopt a resolution approving the restated and amended Sonoma County Waste Management Agency Joint Powers Agreement.
One second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
You oppose?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have one absent, one opposed.
Nay, would nay be more?
Nay, yes, I would be, yeah. So, with that, we will move on. Thank you. We have recommend appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District. We have a staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, this item is for the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District and the governing body for that district is the Board of Trustees and we have a, we have a vacancy from Cattati or a soon-to-be vacancy from Cattati on that board. And so, the city, as the staff report says, the city had advertised for applications for people interested in filling that soon-to-be vacancy and we have one application. Dustin DiMatteo, who is in the audience here, is able to speak to any questions you might have. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Sean, questions? Dustin, would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thank you, Mayor Harvey and the rest of the council for your time and service on Valentine's Day and then call recognition to Yvonne for serving graciously for four years. That's quite the duty and she approached me before tonight's council meeting and gave me some pro tips and whatnot, so I will take that and definitely follow up with you. So, thank you again, yeah, that's all.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I will open this up for public comment. Lori?
This is just another fact. We only have one applicant. He, I have nothing against him or anything. He is involved with Daily Acts, which has a contract with the city. It was my only objection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I will bring it back. Comments, questions?
Um, I have no comments. I'm willing to make a motion.
Okay.
Unless we have further comments from anyone?
No, no, I was impressed.
Um, yeah, it was, the application was, there was enough information in there, so I appreciate that. I'd like to move to appoint to the Board of Trustees for the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District, Dustin DiMatteo.
I have a second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be four with one absent and I guess we will be moving that forward and thank you very much. And I'm sure that Yvonne will help you out there and Yvonne, yes, thank you very much for your service on this. And with that, we will move on and it looks like.
I'd just like to say.
Oh, sure.
Dustin, thank you for stepping up and applying for that position.
So, it looks like we are going to move on and we have a staff report on Myrtle Avenue landscape construction.
Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. The item is for the beautification along Myrtle Avenue. We've identified a project that is fairly inexpensive but has a high impact and that is to go in and replant along the streetscape along Myrtle Avenue. Basically, well, the figure, the figure is shown in, in there from Wren Drive to the city limits. And these areas are in existing landscape and lighting districts, but we, there's not sufficient budget in there to, to even just, just do much more than minimum landscaping. So, replanting is, is beyond the budgets for those two landscape areas. What we, what we've done is we had, back in the strategic planning session, this was identified as a project and approved and rolled into our, included in our budget for $30,000. Staff then went ahead and had a design done for select, a palette of plants and color schemes as well as identify an estimated cost for those plants and then to get the area prepared, the, the soil prepared and the plants put in and then the irrigation lines repaired and the mulch brought in. Over a series of last six months, really, we've, we've had, we've several bids, just go out and come back with no bids. And the reasons for that lack of inter- that lack of response was, it was just a really busy time of year. People were unavailable and then the city's prevailing wage requirements bumped up the costs and I think that, that scared a lot of people away as well. But this last round was successful. We had one, uh, one bidder, Fieldstone, and they came in with a bid and we had to pull the bid apart. And so, it's going to be a combined, the way we have proposed is a combined effort. We'll have Public Works coming in and doing the clearing and grubbing, doing some pruning and prepping the, the area, basically the demo, leaving trees, leaving healthy-looking plants. Then the contract will come and do the soil prep, purchase the plants and do the plantings and then Public Works will come back and again to extend the irrigation lines with the bare dirt and then put in the mulch on top of that. So, a concern could be that with the plants in there without irrigation, you know, would they just, you know, not be sufficient? they just, you know, not be sufficient water for it? Well, the schedule, the way we have this coming in today, it works out in that we have, looking towards a notice to proceed in the next week or two, and then projecting the contractor to be out there planting in mid-March. So you can imagine the ground's pretty wet right now, and it would last May, June. But we, we're going to go in there immediately afterwards to do the irrigation. But like I said, it could probably get by five or six weeks with no irrigation, the way the land is, the soil is so damp right now. In the packet, there's the, the plants that our landscape architect recommends, and they would be put in a, out there in a pleasing pattern, and some of the plants, certain plants would be used to accentuate the corners, and we would go from there. One big thing I'll note before I, and is in the resolution, I wanted to correct the dollar amounts. Like I said, we had $30,000 sum total for the design and the construction, or the installation. And so the 27,500, the 27,500 bid, plus the design gets us to that amount. So we have no contingency, and we're only asking for award of the construction contract for an amount not to exceed 27,500. So we'll, staff will go ahead and make those changes, those corrections to the resolution. It's just in a couple of spots there. It's going to be 27,500 listed in all of those locations. That's all I have, so I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Questions? Yes.
Great, thank you. I, I couldn't find it, I may have overlooked it. Who would be responsible, I assume not the contractor, probably city staff, for pruning? Pruning, thinning, you know, things like that. These shrubs are great, and I have some of these in my front yard, and even though they're drought tolerant and little to no maintenance, every few years, they need some work. They may need to get, you know, if they get really woody, depending on the different species that are here. So where does that fall into the plan? Is that the city's responsibility?
It, yes, yes, as being areas within the Macklin and Quail Hollow
Right.
Landscaping and lighting districts, we do collect revenue for, for maintenance.
Right.
So once the plantings are in, the city would continue to maintain those plants.
Great. And then the irrigation, knowing full well that, you know, it could be several months before irrigation's even needed, although with new plants, it's always needed sooner than later. What, i- is it going to be based on a timer, the irrigation? Or, you know, because honestly, at some point, you won't, you may not need any irrigation there, literally. And, you know, with Xeriscape, which a lot of this falls under, it, it doesn't become an issue when the plants are young, of course, that's more critical. So I'm just wondering, what is the plan for irrigation? Let's leave it at that.
We'll have timed controllers out there that we could do what we want with
Okay.
Per season, and then as the plants get established, as you say, you know, maybe they'll, they'll just be turned off.
Yep, okay. That's great, thank you.
No, thank you. Sean? Okay, then I'll open this up for public comment. Lori?
I sent you all the financial facts on this to back it up, so just so you know. Mr. Scott doesn't mention that this is across from the next in-line housing development of 100 Valprezo by Colvin Group. They should be the ones that are paying for the street improvements, if they want them, which there is, you already have $600,000 worth of improvements, including things like the mosaic, the fence at the Smart Train, that were not funded by any funds other than general funds, which are capital improvements, they're not city services, they shouldn't have been used for Measure G. They're completely funded out of the general fund. Over half of the information of the funds for, general funds have gone to capital improvements, which is not what the ballot measure done. The city is down to no reserves, no designated funds. You went, Parkin Lou has gone down in the last three years from 600,000 to, I don't remember, it was $253,000 or 2,000, but it's, it's been drained out. You're bankrupting us with all these projects, and this one is absolutely for the benefit of that, that developer. There's no question about it. Why else, you spend all the money on the downtown improvement project, and that is just out of the range of the downtown. And so you're, this is what's going to happen, is you're going to have these little projects for what money was drained to downtown, so, because the whole city wasn't covered. Over on the west side, out of the general fund, not like the special grants, there has been $0 spent out of this, out of the general fund on improvements in the last three years. There has been $1.8 million taken out of the general funds on capital improvements for the east, the, east of the freeway side. And it's, it's, you, even when you get $250,000 that was unrestricted in September, it went to the downtown improvement plan. You can't keep putting the money in downtown and neglect the rest of the town and, and play off to the developers. We only have so, four projects worth of land left. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else want to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back. I don't know, maybe I'm a little confused, but I thought that this planting was down on Myrtle, down, pretty far down Myrtle, on either side of Myrtle, nowhere near Valprezo. Am I the one, am I confused?
That's correct. It's along Myrtle Drive, not on Valprezo, so, and it's a highly visible thoroughfare.
I mean, it's about a, I mean, my miles probably aren't very good, but it's a quarter to a half mile away, completely away from where
Well, the western boundary is Wren Drive, and then it goes to Keet.
Thank you. I forgot all my little streets over there.
You come out on Old Red, and, and you're right close to that development. So it's in the vicinity. I mean, but it's
But it's not part of that, I mean, it sounded like it was part, it's not really anywhere near that.
Yeah, I don't think from that development, you even could see these landscape improvements.
No.
I mean, maybe the very edge of them or something, but I don't think you really could even see them. So they're, they're unrelated.
And my recollection is that this has come up multiple times over the last, I don't know, four or five years, because there have been concerns about the landscaping that basically has died over the years in that area, and folks have brought it to our attention that the landscaping needed to be, something needed to be done. And this was kind of one of those things where we discussed in strategic planning that we would, okay, kind of bring it, bring it back up, then the maintenance funds could take care of it. And that was my recollection of what our discussion was.
That's absolutely right, as people in the community and those neighborhoods that were bringing their concerns forward to the staff and the council, and then it became part of strategic planning.
We did talk about that last year, and then one of the things we even talked about that has since been accomplished was smoothing out of that pathway over there for safety concerns, and, and just bringing that whole area up to a more aesthetic appeal there.
Right, that's, that's correct. Yeah, that pathway was also part of that same discussion, which is dug up
Strategic planning.
Yeah, because I think we trimmed back all of the bushes there, because there was an issue with those kind of encroaching upon the, the pathway that lots of folks use. I know you personally have gone out and trimmed them back.
Oh, I don't think so.
No.
That would, yeah, the bushes, the bushes there by the entrance to Putnam was, was the concern.
With these machete.
And if I, and if I may, I don't know that Colvin Group has ever approached us and said, "We're not going to develop unless you clean up Myrtle Avenue."
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's never even, no. There's no connection, there's no connection between
There's no connection between the two.
Right.
Okay.
With that
With that
I move to adopt a resolution awarding the construction contract for the Myrtle Avenue landscaping project to Fieldstone Construction Company, and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract, as well as needed change orders up to the authorized project budget amount that was suggested by Mr. Scott.
I'll second that.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So that is a four to one absent. And with that, Mr. Scott, looks like you're up again.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This item is the annual assessment, levying of assessments against the 10 landscape and lighting maintenance districts. And this one this year has, is a little different in that we're adding a consolidation of the districts into one district with 10 zones to make the process a little less onerous each year, to streamline it. Each of the districts will keep, maintain their own budgets and their own report of maintenance efforts that happen within those. It's just, it'll be within one report instead of 10, and instead of 10 resolutions, we will just have one resolution. So it's quite a bit of labor administrative cost savings to the staff, since we do this report and this effort in-house every year. And the process will, well, it includes three trips to council. The first two are regular agenda items, and the third is the public hearing for the actual adoption and direction to levy the assessments. The first meeting, which is what we're doing tonight, is to go ahead and initiate the annual proceedings to levy the assessments, and to initiate the proceedings to consolidate the districts, and, and then ordering the preparation of the engineer's report. And so like I mentioned, we're going to go ahead and, and prepare the engineer's report in-house. This just kicks it off, and then what, what we will do is come back sometime in May, and with the draft engineer's report that you would consider for approval, and would have a, vote on a resolution of intention to consolidate the districts and levy the annual assessment. And, and it also set the, the date of the public hearing. And then the final one meeting would be in June, where we would go ahead and levy the annual assessments and direct the staff to file those documents, assessment documents with the county. And that would happen around June. The deadlines, I think, August 3rd or something like that. And so we have laid out a schedule to give us plenty of time to put this together, considering, you know, the other things we're doing around here. But that's why it's, it's kind of spread out like this. And we'd hope in future years to go ahead and follow this model, which is more streamlined. We did have attached to the staff report a figure that we pulled together showing all 10 of the proposed zones. Again, these are coincident with the 10 districts, we're just calling them zones from this point forward. And attached to that are the maps of the individual zones. That concludes my presentation. If there's any questions you might have.
Not, not a question, but a comment, although it was always entertaining at the meetings to see a, survive, to see who was going to name two or three of which districts now zones. I really liked the idea of consolidating it so it can be one motion, so, just a comment. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I totally agree with consolidation, makes perfect sense from the staff standpoint. But the one problem I have, and I have it every year, and I don't see it in this report, so I have last year's report saved, so I'm going to look it up, is there was a lot of detailed breakdown for each of the now zones that said, you know, here's, here's the cost per residence in that particular area for lighting, landscaping, and there was a list of things for each of those. And knowing full well that in a number of these zones, there was no landscaping work being done, and I felt that it was very inappropriate and that we should not be charging. So here's, here's my first opening question, Your Honor. Can we change these on an annual basis? Can you, let's just say Zone 2, wherever that is, we are charging $10 per residence for landscaping this year. I'm making all of this up, of course. And we find that there's really, there's no work that's being done there, and next year, can we, when we look at this topic, can we say Zone 2 is not going to get charged any landscaping because we decided not to do that? Knowing that maybe down the road, we go back and charge again, I don't know. Is that an annual change that we can do?
The, the main reason is to reaffirm the need to do the assessment every year. And so each of these zones has a landscaped planting area and lights
Yes.
That impose costs. And the original idea, of course, was to have the development cost neutral in terms of that, so it's not an additional cost out of the general fund to, to beautify these areas. Which you're recommending, and we can certainly adjust the rate for the assessments every year.
That's where
Now, there's an upper limit, you can adjust it down any amount you like, but there's only three of the 10 that you're allowed to adjust it up by, it's tied to a construction cost or a inflation index.
Okay. And Those would be some of the newer developments that came on, probably?
Well, there's three, probably three of the 10, I don't know exactly
Okay.
Which ones. And then, then just to clarify, your, your one point is that we're being pretty deliberate about this process this year. This is just kicking off, we don't have an engineer's report right now. Those details are going to be in the draft engineer's report presented in May.
Okay, that, that's good, but I, I certainly have last year's and prior years, I'm just kind of a hoarder, and I keep those things just to kind of compare each year. But that's always been a concern that I've brought up every year, and I will potentially bring that up again when that comes back to us. So it's just something I want to look at, because there's clearly some of these areas where there's just, there's no landscape maintenance that's going on of any kind. I mean, you may see some of these areas that's just bark, or, you know, some kind of a ground cover that's not vegetation. And those are extreme examples, but I just wanted to, my, my first question was, is this even an option where we could look at adjusting rates? So there's some flexibility, but not as much as I would have guessed, which is fine. I just need to know that, if I make some kind of a recommendation at some future meeting.
You know, I will also add too that, like Craig had said, there, some of them are limited by an absolute cap
Right.
That can never change.
Right.
In spite of inflation or whatever else changes around it
Right.
It's always $10 a year, or whatever it is, you know?
Right.
And then there's some that can adjust by cost of living, like an inflationary index. So that, that's on the upper end, right? On the lower end, you could, you could decide to do, the, the whole reason why we go through this process every year is if you do nothing, then everyone gets assessed zero, right?
Right.
So, you know, you could, how it, how it works So, you know, you could, how it, how it works internally though is, is we look at the, each one of these are, each one of these, what they're, what we're now calling zones, are tracked financially separate, as separate entities. And so we look at the balance, you know, the fund balance for that zone. And then we look at the projected costs for the, for the next year. And that includes water costs, electricity costs, and landscape maintenance costs.
Right.
And then if there's a, if there's an excess, you know, in term, if there's an excess, then we can cut back on the assessment presumably. And there's one, there's only one of those, there's only one of those districts that I really can think of off the top of my head where that's really kind of a topical discussion. And that's Santero Way, the Santero Way District back there because of a variety of reasons, which we can talk about.
Okay.
Not, not Park Meadows, but Santero. There's a, there's a park in the back of Santero Way.
Okay. And I, I will say regarding the whole lighting half of landscape and lighting assessment districts is that the city's always been very responsive. I, I've had many people throughout different sections of the city say, "Oh, it was really easy. You're right. If I call the city up and say, 'There's a street light that's burned out,'" within a couple of days, it gets fixed. So, so that part, you know, again, the streetlights are there for some important reasons and, and everybody appreciates those. But it's the landscaping part that just has me concerned, and so it's just something I'm going to keep my eye on for now. But thank you.
I, I was just going to add to that. There was an issue with one of the districts a couple of years ago where they had some lights out and those needed to be completely replaced to a better model. There was not the funds within the district at that time to do that, so they had to wait until the next assessment district where they could have the accumulation of those funds. So I don't know that we want to look at necessarily, have you seen those assessments? But of course, that would be on a case-by-case basis.
And in fact, we have had years where we have not done an assessment because there wasn't anything to do.
In some districts, there was.
Because there was already a fund balance and it was enough to cover what we already had, so some of them come across that way. I guess my only question is, and this is maybe for the next phase of this, is do we have any other of these zones that may need a little facelift like we looked at Myrtle? And I know that we can't assess them anymore for that, but I would hope that we would, you know, kind of get a heads up on that if there were some others that we ought to start thinking about, you know, kind of sprucing them up too.
Well, these, these landscape and lighting assessment districts are formed at the time it's developed because you have one property owner. It's, it's extremely difficult to come back later when you have fifty different property owners and have them all vote to join and create an assessment district.
Right, but just like we just, on the previous item, the item before this, we're actually fixing up Myrtle. Do we have any that are in that dire, you know, kind of state than, than we saw like that? Just, it would be nice to know, kind of like you look at road pavement, you know, and, and you have an index, is it good or is it failed? It, it would be nice to know if we have others that are failed or failing so that we can kind of keep our eye on them.
Well, Mayor, I'd say with all due respect that there are definitely sections of road in the city that we know are in horrid condition. There was a number of them on the west side of town, remember walking during campaigning, that were bad. There's a number of areas that have buckled sidewalks. And so, yeah, I think, and I would put, personally, I'd put a higher priority on those than I would on landscaping. But I, I think that's kind of a comprehensive look at things.
Right, just to kind of, yeah, these are kind of headed, I mean, because this one, it, it took it to the point where we got a lot of people asking to do something and, and if we could kind of know if we're headed in that direction on others, it would be sort of nice to know. That's all, that's all I was asking.
Yeah.
I would like to compliment staff on creating greater efficiencies in administration. It took us a while on that one. I don't know how long we've had those districts.
We enjoyed the process.
I'm sure.
I bet you did.
Craig didn't enjoy it as much as I did apparently, so, yeah. But, you know, on the landscape maintenance though, that, that's a contractor that we pay to maintain the landscaping. So, you know, we're always interested in feedback in terms of following up with them to make sure that things are being maintained at adequate level.
Yeah, I have a feeling those willow trees on, along Myrtle Avenue that in the last four years, I probably did significantly more pruning than anything down on Myrtle Avenue from the contractors. And I know that those willows, that wasn't a part of, I don't believe that's a part of their contract work, but it's, yeah. And there's other areas that we, I, I totally agree, that we need to look at, so.
Just, you know, just kind of has a, a heads up. That's all I was asking. So, any other questions? All right, I'll open this up for public comment. Any comment on this? Yes, Eric?
This sort of echoes what I, I sense some of you are saying, but it doesn't deal directly with this item, but in some ways it does. Essentially, your neighboring city RP has been doing surveys every year, this is their second year, where they simply ask residents what's working, what needs work, et cetera. Certainly, certain areas, as you've addressed, maybe on the west side or whatever else, they may say, "No, we don't need shrubs, but we need sidewalks," or "We need upgrade." And a simple survey, you could do it four times a year, put it in the water bill. And ideally, some people will write in reasonable complaints or suggestions for improvement in their, not district, but in their block or in their neighborhood and say, "This is what we need out here." So the more you can get input from the community, I think the more you actually have. And certainly, it would take staff and perhaps the five of you going out and saying, instead of every election year, but maybe just going out and going, "Well, yes, this person does have a valid complaint. The sidewalk is four inches above the, the root stock or whatever else." Or this, this spillway needs to be improved because otherwise we're going to have a problem with the storm drain, et cetera, et cetera. And I can tell you right now, the lamp between the old Exchange Bank building, eighty-two twenty Redwood, and the trade winds is out. So that's downtown. And believe it or not, downtown has probably the worst lighting of the whole old Redwood improvement. So, you know, it's a simple thing of listening to your constituents, maybe four times a year, put out an easy survey or an ask or request for information and have them get back to you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, George?
That's a wonderful idea. In addition, I think it's important that the city begin a policy that every recommendation or complaint that comes in from the citizens be made public, made part of the public record. They should be included in the public packet. They should be available for review. You should be documenting them, chronalizing them chronically and so forth. But the, the fact is, is, is when I was on the city council, that was one of the things that I wanted to see. People were walking into my office on Monday nights when I was holding office hours, and they were explaining to me that they had lodged complaints against the city for this or that, or asked for requests or information, and they were not being satisfied. They were not given that information. I had to hand-held them, hand-hold them back in the city manager's office and try to find out what the status of these complaints were. And I brought it up to the city council. I said, "Wouldn't it be nice in our packets to be able to hear these complaints, to read them, the emails, the letters?" But the city manager told me that, "No, George, we don't want, we don't want to share that with the, the council. We're not going to share it with you." There, there's something, there's a place that we should go, is let all these emails and letters and even telephone requests about a light being out or a sidewalk that's buckled, they should be documented. And they should, you should be given that information, and that information should be in the packet for the public to read. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will bring it back. So.
No further comments? I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead. I was going to jump in there, but.
I'm trying to save your voice.
Go for it.
All you have to do is say yes or no. I move to adopt a resolution initiating proceedings to consolidate the ten existing landscape and lighting maintenance districts into one district, with each current district becoming individual benefit zones and initiating proceedings to levy the annual assessment for the consolidated district. There's a lot of districts in that motion, by the way. A lot.
At second. Do we have a motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That would be four with one absent. Okay, so, where are we now? There are correspondence impending legislation. There is none. So how about a city manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So there's a couple updates and some things that were actually kind of interesting that I thought I'd share. So at, at the last council meeting, I mentioned that the League of California Cities had a, has an exchange program in Australia, California Exchange Program. And there was a individual from Australia that was coming to Sonoma County. Actually, the city manager that was exchanged, that was doing the exchange for Sonoma County was the, was Santa Rosa's city manager, Sean McGlynn. So he'd gone to Australia, and then in return, this guy by the name of Scott Mason came here to California, to Sonoma County. And he went around to all the different cities, most of the cities in Sonoma County, and he spent a couple hours here. And it was actually, it was pretty interesting. The, the main, the main point of it is to try to share information and kind of share perspectives and just see how the other, how the other side of the world operates. You know, there's different ways, as it turns out, different ways to do the same thing. And in Australia, so I'll, I'll just touch on the highlights which I thought were just, they just stuck with me because they were just interesting and in some cases, very different than how we do things here. So, well, national health care, right, that's one of them. So he described the national health care system, which is, it's not that unusual, but obviously, Ameri, United States doesn't have that. And it's a one percent of salary is what they assess people for that program. And he says that that's, that's supplemented by private insurance, and it's about a hundred dollars a month for private insurance. So I thought that was unbelievably cheap, but that's, anyway, that's their health program. And it kind of reinforced, you know, some of the, I think, you know, in, in many cases, some of the costs we pay here are subsidizing many other people elsewhere. And Australia is a Commonwealth, right? There's, so they're, they're part of the, the former British Empire. And even though I, I knew this, I never really understood the full implications of it. And as a Commonwealth, the Queen or the monarchy is still head of state. And so that means that the Queen has what's called a governor general in each Commonwealth country, including Australia. And the governor general is the Queen's representative in that country. And if the Queen decides that they want to sack the prime minister, they do that. So the Queen just tells the governor general throughout the Australian prime minister, and it shall be done, right? So that, that happened in the seventies and, as you can imagine, caused quite a bit of controversy in Australia that the Queen from England can just throw out their prime minister and appoint somebody new. So anyways, I thought that was kind of interesting, because I couldn't even imagine someone throwing our president out like that, someone from a different country. That would be quite controversial. So another thing that really stood out is they only have three levels of government in Australia. They have the federal government, which does most of the same things that our federal government does, you know, trade and national defense and that sort of thing. They have a state government, so just like ours, there's several states within Australia. And then the third level that they have is, is what I, what I'd characterize as sort of a, a blend of a city and county. So here we have a county level government and a city level government. There, the state just organizes the, the councils within the state. And so, for example, it will set up some areas, especially in rural areas that look more like a county government with small cities, and then other areas that are more populous in, in the Queensland state, Brisbane's an example, right? Where they just draw the line right around the city of Brisbane because it's more populous states. The council there only governs Brisbane. And as opposed to some of the bigger areas that are more like counties, but they're governed the same way. And then the state occasionally decides to reorganize, kind of like congressional redistricting, right? They just come and just change all the, all the boundaries, and everyone gets thrown out, and they re-elect people, and it's all new, a whole new government, a whole new day. And it's, you know, I couldn't even imagine the kind of chaos that would create, you know, in the United States if that were to happen. But anyway, that's, that's how they do that. And then, and then finally, the other thing that really stood out, which I thought was interesting is, so in California, we have the Brown Act. It's a California thing, right? And in, in Australia, they obviously don't have anything like the Brown Act. And they, they come from a, an English, an English governing system, which is kind of, has a fun, has a fundamentally a different premise, which is that they elect, people elect council members in this case to represent them. And if they want to talk to the council members or their government, they could talk to them outside of meetings, right? So they, they'll talk, they'll set an appointment with a council member, or they'll talk to their, the civil servants, right, to bring up concerns or issues. And if there's big issues or complicated issues, they'll have like town hall type meetings. But the, their councils have, they're able to, they, and they routinely meet in closed session together, all of them, to talk about issues. And for the public meetings, there's no public comment. So they just go through the agendas, and so the decisions are made in public, but there's no comment at all allowed in public meetings, which I thought was interesting. It's just a different, it just, it just drove home in California how much, as a society, we value transparency and openness and, and, you know, making sure that everything we do is available to the public. Where there, I, I, I don't know, you know, where exactly that was coming from, but it's, you know, maybe efficiency. I'm not sure. But anyway, it was just an interesting contrast. And then, and then finally, taxes. As you know, California has a plethora of initiatives that regulate taxes in all sorts of ways. And that's not the case in Australia. So the states set the taxes, and they just come up, I guess they have a formula. They figure out how much they need for the next year, and they set the tax rate, and then that's how it's assessed. Which, you know, that, that was interesting. It's obviously not how we do it in California or the United States. And, and on the note, on the tax, on the tax structure thing, I was also involved in a league discussion on sales tax particularly, which I thought was really fascinating and I'll just share with you. The, there's been a lot of interest at the state level to modernize the, the sales tax structure in California. It was originally set up in the nineteen thirties, based on how the economy operated in the nineteen thirties. And so subsequently, there's been a lot of changes in how the economy operates. Services are now a much bigger part of our economy than they were in the nineteen thirties. Internet-based businesses are now a reality which they weren't obviously in the thirties. And there's also a variety of kind of, you know, tax sharing agreements and weird, you know, kind of odd arrangements that are happening. And plus, a whole list of exemptions. And so when we were looking at the exemptions that are available for sales tax, there were so many that you couldn't, literally could not read them on the slides. So, you know, since the nineteen thirties until now, there's been, you know, between, between the changes, the initiative-driven changes in how taxes can be created and assessed, plus all the exemptions, plus the fact that it's only tax, like, the sales tax, and the sales tax only taxes sales. It, it's, the analogy they use, it's like the Leaning Tower of Pisa, right? So your, your base is really narrow because what you collect is very narrow and it's, and it's relatively tall, right? So the, the League of California Cities and some of their subcommittees were looking at that. And what was, what was interesting is a lot of, a lot of the states now, so California's kind of an outlier in this respect, but a lot of the states tax digital services, which California doesn't. And a lot of, a lot of the states, and one of the, one of the states that I'm, I'm personally more familiar with is, is the state of Texas, which is typically viewed as a kind of a anti-tax type state. And they, they're actually a pioneer, I guess you'd call it that, a pioneer in service tax. So they tax services and goods as opposed to just goods like California taxes. And so, anyway, that's, that's how they, that's how they, that's how they assess taxes in that, in that state, which is interesting. There's a mu- much higher property tax and much higher sales tax. So it's just kind of an interesting contrast in trying to figure out. contrast in trying to figure out, and all this discussion wasn't about, it wasn't about necessarily increasing any taxes. It was about a, kind of, a net neutral change to make it make more sense with the economy the way it is today. So, anyway, just a fascinating discussion. There'll be more on that, I'm sure. And then, just go through some city projects. We were awarded a pavement management grant. It's for the site, the two-year cycle for pavement management maintenance. We got a $12,000 grant again this year. And Smart is continuing to do their tests of the crossing, and Runaway Park in the county is completing their, we're completing the paperwork and evaluating potentially, it's coming in a quiet sound. So, like we talked about before, we'll be coming back when we know more in that respect. And we're working with a contractor in the downtown regarding some of the damaged paving areas and making sure that's corrected at no charge to the city, of course. And there's remaining striping, green bike lanes, monument columns, and seating that are all still to be installed there shortly. And then, the Keter Field Accessibility Improvements, it's a CDBG project, is out to bid, and the council will be seeing that once we get bids back on that. That's creating, that's a sidewalk extension from the civic center to the neighborhood there. And on the recreation front, Katahdie resident Jessica Schiller last Saturday was honored at the California Parks and Rec Society Annual Awards Banquet for her years of dedication and volunteerism for Kids' Day and many other events in Katahdie. And she's a former Citizen of the Year, and we're thankful to have her. She's volunteering for a lot of things, so she's a great, great help to us. And then, the recreation programs, we're working on programming for our March 20th to 24th Spring Break Animal Planet Camp for kids while they're out of school, but their parents still work for spring break. And we're also gearing up for summer camps, including, and also including events such as the 25th Annual Kids' Day Parade and the Festival, National Night Out, and then Movies in the Park this summer. And we currently have 31 students enrolled in the Star Kids Spring Show, Shrek Jr., which will open in May. And the exciting news is we're getting ready to print our first activity guide, which we mailed out to residents and available in City Hall, which will describe our upcoming and ongoing recreation programs and offerings. And we expect that to hit mailboxes sometime in March, so be on the lookout for that. With that, I think I've talked enough. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes.
So, I have a question on, getting back to Australia. No public comment? I mean, so they're making decisions without any input from the public, or is there a process before these public meetings, like if it's a planning issue? I don't get that at all. I really don't.
Yeah, well, so let me carve out planning issues. I think there's, you know, they separately have workshops and things for that.
Okay.
But the expectation is for regular council meetings that people, if they have questions or concerns at the council, that they contact their representatives prior to the meeting. Except the meetings themselves, they don't accept public comment.
Ah. Sorry, it just, that blows my mind. That's all I can say.
Yes. I was going to ask, when you were talking about the paving and the finishing up striping and all of that, a few of my neighbors in the area, when I've been walking around, have asked about if there are going to be any kind of traffic calming added back to Old Redwood Highway near Henry and William, near the mobile station there, because we used to have bot dots. I think it was the raised dots to slow people down, because there's quite a few people just kind of shooting through it, even though we've got the, it's clearly delineated crosswalks and everything there. So, anyway, a few people had asked me to put that bee in your bonnet.
Okay, yeah, Craig and I can talk about that.
No, I don't have any questions on that. Thanks. Do you, have you got an update on our new website? Because based on some of the citizen comments, that might be an opportunity to also survey the community.
Yeah, we're still working through the remapping, the content into the new, you know, locations. So, in terms of timing, I still, I'm still trying to get it done before the end of the fiscal year.
Oh.
Yeah, that's still our goal. We originally were shooting for March, but just other fires seem to come up, and, yeah, but we're still shooting for the end of the fiscal year. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So, council member reports.
Nothing for me this time, thanks. I've been too sick.
Glad that you're better.
A couple of quick ones. So, it's been a while since we've had our council meeting because of the extra week. Late January, though, we had our Ag and Open Space District Meeting, and we're at the next meeting, which is next Thursday. We're going to be finalizing a mitigation plan that we will then forward to the Board of Supervisors. And we did elect a new slate of officers, and I got elected as the chair of that committee. So, that'll be, and of course, I'm missing the very next meeting, so that just shows my leadership skills right there. I missed the chamber dinner, even though I walked down to the chamber office one day and dropped my check in an envelope in the mail, and I never wrote it on the calendar and remembered the next day. So, I made a nice donation, I guess, to the chamber. Good for them.
It was delicious.
I'm glad. I heard it was great. The mayor's and council members meeting, I thought, was a very interesting one, where the county came and made, and the city of Santa Rosa made a presentation on, I think what they referred to as the business tax on medical cannabis, recreational cannabis. So, it's a very interesting approach that those two jurisdictions, and I think Santa Rosa's even ahead of the county in what they're proposing and what they're doing. So, we're all going to learn from this, definitely. And lastly, I just want to say that many of us in this room were at Prue Draper's Services on the 7th, and I appreciate what the mayor did at the last meeting in memory of Prue, but I just wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Okay.
Back on, I want to say the, I forget what the date was, when we were up in Fortuna, on the 20th, 4th, 5th, something like that, we had our annual board meeting for REMITH. And there were some concerns about a year ago in reference to the viability of the self-funding plan for the medical benefits. And we had a very good year, and it's going along very well. And it's reserving and saving the cities. I think the premium savings is close to a million, was it? Something like that? I didn't, I grabbed my packet, but forgot to bring it with the specific numbers. But that's going along very well. The liability insurance for when people sue the city for like frivolous stuff like that has gone up a little bit for the city. And then, our property has gone up a little bit due to vehicles and accidents and things like that. Workers' comp is trending a little high. And of course, fortunately, with the pooling, that softens those numbers, so it's not as significant. But those are some areas that we want to try to make sure that we are staying on top of with outreach and education on some of those programs within each of the member cities. But overall, pretty positive. And then, just the chamber dinner was excellent. Very well attended. And then, of course, I thought the mayor's and council members' meeting that was hosted by Katahdie, the staff did an excellent job on that. Very nice. I heard nothing but compliments from the people participating, so it was nice.
Hey. Let's see. I have a whole list here. So, on January 26th, I attended the North Bay Division General Membership Meeting, and they had a tour of the Smart Train before. And a lot of folks hadn't been on the Smart Train, so that was kind of nice for a lot of people. And then, they had a discussion around transit-oriented development, and Petaluma shared some of what's going on with the Petaluma area down there and how they're trying to do some infill transit-oriented development down there. And then, on the 30th, I attended the ABAG meeting, and that was a special ABAG meeting. And that, they were trying to get feedback from all the cities about how ABAG will look in the future with its merger with MTC, what do, what do cities still want ABAG to cover and do for them. So, they had sort of a general meeting for not very long about cities working together and things, and then they broke everybody up into little groups and kind of listened to people's thoughts and ideas about that. So, more to come, you know, after that merger to see what will happen on that. I attended the WAC meeting, and as everyone knows, it's been raining a lot. So, we have a lot of water. The supply is very good right now. I think most people have seen what's happening up in Port Orville. Mendo, they are going to be able to hold back more water than they normally do, so that we'll have it. But they're watching very carefully the spring rain, because they want to be sure that, you know, they don't, you know, let it overflow or anything like that. We will be getting a draft budget in early March on the water rates, so that, stay tuned for that. And thank you, Mr. Scott, for working on that with them. Then I attended the, after that meeting, we had more fun with the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability, and that was a really, really fun meeting. So, we're trying, another JPA, imagine that. And we're trying to work out, you know, who gets what, and how do we vote, and who, you know, so more fun on that. We didn't get as far as I think we wanted to. I think they thought they could get done. They had a facilitator, but out of like three items, we only got one sort of settled, but it sounds like it might pop its little head up again. So, more to come on that JPA. And then, I attended the mayor's and council members' meeting too. And yes, thank you, staff, for putting that together. Everyone enjoyed themselves. We passed forward all of the selection of all of the folks that we voted on. And I will say, Lauren, thank you for the little city logo things. The cities thought that that was very nice, that you went to that trouble to kind of pull up their logo and put it on the tables. People appreciated that. I also went to the chamber dinner and attended Prue's Services. So, with that, I've been kind of a little busy, but other than that, we can move on. And we have public comment on non-action items. Yes, Lori?
That's fine.
That's fine. That's perfectly fine.
I guess you've all decided not to follow the Brown Act, and you've gone back a step and not allowed us to speak on every action item, I mean, every item on the agenda as the Brown Act says. This would have been in place if you had let me speak after the councilman, after Damian's report. There was a lot of negativity about his interpretation of Australia. As usual, he's hearing about it. I've lived it. I worked, I got my master's degree in occupational therapy at the University of Sydney. I lived in Australia for three years. Your councilperson fought for you. Every neighborhood had a councilperson. It was people, so everybody was representative. They don't need rules on open government. They don't, people's rights are assumed. They, anything, I never heard anybody complain about their council member or getting things done. As far as health care, it comes out of their general sales tax. They have a 10% sales tax, and the whole medical system comes out of that. When I was an intern at a neurorehab hospital, what would happen is the patients would be stabilized at the acute hospital after like a stroke. We'd come in, they'd come into our facility, first thing I would tell them is take off your clothes, we're going for a shower assessment. And that was really funny, but then, after, then, within the next few days, they hand me their keys to their house. We would go in and make plans for their, for home modifications. Then, a government contractor would, they would, sorry, distracted by the time, they would come in and do the home modifications. Then the person would be discharged from, within two to three months from the rehab hospital when they were stable and had gained back function. This cost them nothing at all. They, it was all handled by the government. So, I don't know if all of, your negativity on everything is wrong. This was because basic rights are assumed, and that you will be represented and listened to, and that health care was a right. And we don't bankrupt people like this country does, or we don't listen to people like them. It's, I don't appreciate how he, Damian, framed that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and esteemed council members of the city of Katahdie. My name is Dean Kendrick, and I want to bring to attention to the city something that I find that is a little threatening here on West Sierra Avenue, just only a few miles away, not even a few, maybe a mile and a half away. It happens to do with eucalyptus trees. The other day, the winds were blowing pretty strong, as you may have noticed, along with the storms. And some people call it the Pineapple Express, and other people may call it something else, but I call it winter. The fact of the matter is this. There are eucalyptus trees here on West Sierra Avenue that I think are threatening, with shallow roots, and having had as much drought as the state of California has had in years, and with the wet weather. I noticed that these trees were blowing in gusty winds, and there was a lot of creaking sounds, which is a sign they may topple right here on West Sierra, which is a main thorough pass for people headed to Highway 101. And I just want to bring it to the attention of the esteemed city council and the honorable mayor, that maybe there may be more attention need to be given to these particular eucalyptus trees with shallow roots after having such drought for so many years, and with the amount of rain that's fallen in such a short order. In fact, we've had more rain in the last 27, 28 days than the amount of months that there are this year. So, I'm just bringing it on notice, not to raise ire or anything like that, but to suggest that there might need to be a little more investigation. And I love trees, but these are non-native species trees, and they're right here, just up the street from the city council chamber. And so, I would advise that there might be a better inspection by your arborists and your city engineers to make sure that the safety of the public is in order. Because what I heard the other morning as I walked past them as the sun rose was very threatening. And I would suggest that it might be worthwhile to seek a little more investigation on these particular eucalyptus trees. And again, I love trees. So, that's all I have to say, and thank you for letting me spend some time with you tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, George?
Council alluded to tonight their concern about the homeless parking project down near the freeway, about how well that program, those extra few parking stalls for the homeless, is working. Not whether or not people are freezing to death out in their cars, but really, you know, what is the, what is the... what is the, what is the participation rate so far with this project? Now, three weeks ago, I brought the idea up that I was concerned about this project being right next to a noisy freeway without a sound wall. As Mr. Mark Landman had alluded, there was a sound wall there, but there is no sound wall there, that it is the wrong spot for such a project in town. But the fact is, I brought up the idea of maybe having a police officer who's on patrol each evening at about midnight to maybe drive by, do a safety check of the area and take one photograph on his cell phone of how many cars are parked out there and text that, message that over to the police chief, and let the police chief email that to you, so that each day you get a little indication of a photo or two of how many cars are out there. Because I go by there frequently at night to see myself and it's, it's not being used at all most nights. I've seen a motorhome there, a couple cars there on another night. It's not a success. So since it was my idea to have the city staff or a police officer go by and take a photo, since I came up with that idea, and it's evidently not a good idea, maybe I should take it upon myself to go by as often as I can at nighttime. And I'll take a photograph and I will place it on the Facebook page, Let's Talk Katati. You guys can get on there, you can see those photographs. I can also email them, email those photographs to you, email them to staff. I mean, if we're not paying our police officers enough money while they're out on patrol to get a couple photographs for you, since you're so concerned, and after three weeks, staff hasn't thought my idea was a good idea, I will take it upon myself to help out the city, so that you can get that information that you need.
Thank you. Anyone else?
These are non-action agenda items?
Yeah, this is public comment on non-action agenda items.
I'd like feedback on the last speaker's comment.
It's not an agenda item, so I really can't.
We will be, public comment is open on the non-action agenda items. So that, what he spoke of is not an agenda item. And we have asked earlier for that to be brought back to us. So we will have an agenda item on a future agenda to take a look at the safe parking program. Yeah, general public comment was earlier in the meeting. General public comment was citizens' business was item number seven a while ago. So, but we will be bringing the safe parking program back, so please do watch for that on the agenda.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, I don't know that the participants in a safe parking program want to have individuals driving through there and taking pictures of them?
Too bad.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess if you're homeless and needing a temporary place to stay, you don't have any rights of privacy according to Mr. Barage. But I really think, I really think that it would behoove us to treat them with respect and dignity. And also, I think it's interesting that we actually want fewer spots that we have available to be used, because that means there are few people who are needing Catholic charity services. So we don't want all 10 spaces filled every night, because that would mean there are more people who are needing the services. So the fact that there may only be three or four doesn't mean that the program has failed. It means we're offering the services to people who need them in time for them not to become permanently homeless. So I really would not want to be photographed while sleeping. I just want to put that out there.
All right. Let's move on now. So information received after the agenda was posted. We have nothing, correct? No?
That's correct.
Okay. And then with that, we will adjourn this meeting at 8:55. Thank you.